Good afternoon. Welcome to our Tuesday, November 14th meeting. We are located today down in Centerville at the Woodborne Library. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dodge.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first we're gonna have the Director of the Library, Linda Foltz.
Liz.
Liz, I'm sorry, Liz. I don't know why I said Linda. Please, go ahead.
All right, well, thank you. We are so excited to have you here today. We're happy to host this meeting. It's a great chance to see everyone and meet everyone, so we're really pleased to have you. And I'm grateful for having a few minutes to tell you about some of the special and unique things that we are doing at the library and things that are happening. Our biggest, most recent news is that we have purchased a small building. It's off of Congress Park, and we are going to use that to house our staff that work behind the scenes. So, our fiscal office, human resources, the staff that purchase and process all of our new materials, our IT staff, they will be working in this building, which will, in that building, which will allow us to free up some space in our Centerville Library. So we are looking at doing some renovations to that building. It was built in 1995. A lot of the furniture and carpeting is still original, and people are using libraries differently now than they were 30 years ago. So freeing up some space will allow us to move our maker space. We have a small maker space. It's called the Creativity Commons. We created in partnership with Washington Township. It is currently located in the Recplex East Building. It's only about 800 square feet, but we have had over 15,000 people visited so far this year, and it's only open five hours a day. So there is 3D printers, laser etcher and engraver, embroidery machine, large format printer, a sublimation printer. It's a small space, but it's very mighty, and it's been hugely popular. We're looking to expand the hours and the offerings of that maker space by being able to move it into the Centerville Library. So we're excited about the opportunities, what that building will be able to become as it adapts to current needs and gets better situated for future changes. We also have some newer collections that are a little non-traditional. We started lending out Rokus, and I always have people say to me, "Well, I have a Roku at home." Yes, but our Rokus have all the stuff. So there's Disney Plus, Hulu, Netflix, Apple TV. All the streaming services are already logged in on our Roku, so all you have to do is take it home, plug it in, connect it to your Wi-Fi, and you can watch whichever streaming service that you're interested in. So often, there might just be one show on a platform that you want to watch, but you don't want to subscribe, so you can borrow the Roku from the library and be able to watch Ted Lasso on Apple TV. Another really popular collection that we've started recently is board games. We were able to start that collection through a large anonymous donation. Somebody gave us over 100 games, so we've put those out for people to borrow. We've supplemented it with some popular things. If you've heard of Exploding Kittens, we have that. That's, I know it sounds weird, but that is a very popular game right now. So all different kinds of difficulty and ages. With the holidays and winter coming, that would be something else to look into and check out, have some family fun. So that is just a really brief update that I wanted to give you all of what we are doing here at the Washington Centerville Public Library. So thank you for the time, and again, welcome to our building.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, it's beautiful. Beautiful building.
It is beautiful. Great. And what year did you guys do this library?
It was finished in 2018.
Okay.
We reopened September 2018.
Really pretty. Thank you. Thanks for having us. Okay, since we're in Centerville, we thought what a perfect time to recognize some incredible students. The Commissioners, Carolyn and Judy and I first heard about some of your work at the Clothes That Work Luncheon. And of course, I've heard of your Spirit Chain for years, but thanks for all you do. And I want to ask you to come up. First, we're gonna hear from the Class President, Milan Carshane, right? Did I say it right?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, good.
Yes, hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us today. This is the Senior Vice President Ella Mikecelle joining me here as well.
Hi.
And then the rest of our senior representatives. So as you may know, Spirit Chain is an annual event that started in 1983, was it?
Yes.
And so it's a competition between Fairmont and Centerville to see who can raise the most money. This year, we selected our two charities as Clothes That Work and Diabetes Dayton, so two amazing causes that we're super happy to give back to the community for. This year, we raised $86,866, which broke the school record, and we're extremely happy to, you know, announce that, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yesterday was philanthropy day, and you guys are amazing philanthropists, so thank you so much. Carolyn, did you want to?
Well, I was, as I told you before the meeting, when we hear of feats like that, I'm a Centerville resident. My children went to Centerville, so the Spirit Week is not a new thing to me. But like you said, amazing approaching $90,000 is just incredible. And I know for us, I think it gives us great hope for the future, that emerging leaders like yourself already have a big heart for big causes, and so we have high hopes for you and everyone involved in the community. We congratulate you on your hard work, and we're counting on you to keep up the spirit for, hopefully, for forever.
Will do. We appreciate that.
Because we know that when you do that, you're gonna make wherever you land, and we hope many of you stay here, but a better place. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your enthusiasm, your hard work, and your initiative. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you so much.
So we have proclamations for all of you. Did everybody come, all 10 or 12 here?
All but.
We're missing.
No, not everybody.
We're missing a few.
Okay. So what we'll do is I'll give them all to you two, and you can pass them out, but I would like to read the proclamation, and actually, well, I'll wait. We're gonna have our two ladies that we met at the Clothes That Work come up after you guys, so just a minute. So whereas the Centerville High School Student Council sponsors a Spirit Chain fundraiser to encourage students to engage with local charities, and whereas the 2024 Senior Class of Centerville High School is represented on Student Council by Milan, Ella Mikecelle, Danny Gaddash, Daniel Dorsey, Danielle McGoffin, Gray Ramos, and Paige Cummings, Grace Redmond, Matt Leedy, and Aiden Brown. And whereas the Spirit Chain fundraiser raised $86,866 to be divided equally between Clothes That Work and Diabetes Dayton. And whereas the fundraiser is an example of the students breathing life into the Centerville City School District motto of "Let us be known by our spirit." Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio does hereby offer congratulations to the Centerville High School Student Council for their effort to support local charities. Thanks, you guys. And so we're gonna make you all come up for a picture, so come on up. And then after we do the picture, Leah and Maddie, we want you to say a few words, and we'll stand up. So you guys just stand right here.
Yep. Wait a minute.
Okay.
Well, this is a bit.
Yeah. I knew we needed to come around. You guys are tall.
Yeah, this might not work that way.
Wait up.
Yeah, I'm quite a bit taller. The ones who see everybody.
Yeah. Exactly. She talks like she's awesome. Don't talk so much. Thanks for the rest.
Thank you.
All right, how do you guys squeeze in a bit more? She actually designed it maybe, yeah. Do you all want to step away this way so you're not seeing any of the background?
I don't know, this is our.
I like them.
They're always sitting on one side.
They always work.
It's their choice. All right, ready? One, two, three. I'm gonna take a couple. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
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 Awesome.
Thank you.
I love the rest of you.
Thank you. All right, ladies, come on up. So Leah Matthews and Maddie Turber. So go ahead.
Hi, so I am Maddie.
And I'm Leah. So last year, as juniors, we raised over $5,000 for Spirit Chain, and me and Leo were like, "That's good," but like, we have bigger goals for ourselves. So this year, we had a goal of $10,000.
And we exceeded our goal, raising $12,800.
Woo-hoo.
So through that, we reached out to our local Nuno optimists. We also reached out to Rotary Club, and we hosted a pickleball tournament.
We did dance classes, because we're both on the Centerville Codes varsity dance team. So we hosted dance classes for younger dancers. We set up booths at football games, tailgates, just trying to raise money any way we could.
And we also reached out to many local businesses as well.
Awesome. That is amazing.
That's great.
It really is.
Yeah.
And they got a shout-out at the Clothes That Work Luncheon. They were there at that, and that was really special that we were able to actually, that's
how we knew what all the work you guys had done. So thank you. We have a proclamation, it's very similar, but it has each of your names in it, so I won't read it, but just again, thank you. I mean, what, that's amazing that the two of you raised $12,000, almost $13,000.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We were so lucky.
Come raise money for us. Do you want to win our picture with them? Of course we do. Leah and Maddie, come on up. And to your teachers, I know, do you have a teacher here with you by chance, or advisor?
She's running late. She's gonna come.
Okay. All right, well.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, getting this a little bit tighter? One, two, three. I'm gonna take a couple again. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Keep your eye on us.
Thank you.
Well, I know a county engineer always likes going after nice presentations, so county engineer.
Yeah, I always have to hard act to follow. I'd like to add my congratulations to all the students. That's great work. I know a lot of places could use your fundraising. And great to have your work. I went to Fairmont, but it was Fairmount West, and they were best. So good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. Happy to be here today in Centerville. We have two resolutions today. The first is Resolution 23-1470 to amend the agreement with Carpenter Marti Transportation Inc. for Professional Engineering Services for the Northeast Logistics Access Project in the city of Vandalian in Butler Township by adding $1,018,860 for a revised total of $1,941,261. And 23-1471 is to approve the donation of a standard highway easement and a temporary construction easement to the city of Dayton for the North Main Street Improvement Project. These are in front of the Stillwater Center. The permanent easement is actually, the existing sidewalk is not inside the rideaway, so we have to bring that inside the rideaway and some other things.
Good. Okay, move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under County Sheriff, Resolution 1472, authorize the purchase from Precision Laser Instrument Inc. for forensic scanning equipment in amount not to exceed $80,937.67 through December 31st, 2024.
I move for approval. Second.
Office in favor?
Aye.
Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under the Crime Lab, 1473, accept an additional contract extension from the Indiana State Police Department for contract drug analysis services in amount not to exceed $467,440 through June 30th, 2024.
Oh, move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And just have a question, Chris. Why are we doing that with the Indiana State Police Department?
Well, Indiana State, their crime lab is run by the state police, and they are significantly behind in drug analysis, so they've contracted with that.
Okay, so they've contracted with us. Well, that's good. Can we, like, sell our services to other states?
Yes, we can.
Maybe? Okay, good. Just checking. County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under County Administrator, approve the minutes of meetings November 7th, 2023. Resolution 1474, approval of bills list available in the Clerk's Office. 1475, approval of travel expenses list available in the Clerk's Office. And 1476, approval of personal actions list available in the Clerk's Office.
I move for approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Administrative Services, Tyler.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for you today, beginning with Resolution 1477. This authorizes an inter-local purchasing agreement with the Purchasing Solutions Alliance, a cooperative purchasing program, through November 13th of 2024 with automatic successive one-year renewal terms. Resolution 1478, authorize a service agreement with Utilities Instrumentation Service Ohio LLC for Eastern Regional Electrical Maintenance Service for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $71,650 through December 31st of 2023. Resolution 1479, amends the price agreement with Crown Personnel Services Incorporated for temporary staffing services by adding additional job classifications and rates for various county departments and extending the term through March 31st of 2024. Resolution 1480, authorizes a change order to the agreement with Calvary Contracting Incorporated for the rivalled fourth-floor public defender renovation project by increasing the original amount by $123,589.85 for a revised total of $5,692,454, and extend the date through March 19th of 2024. The following two resolutions authorize agreements, beginning with 1481. This is with Public Health Dayton Montgomery County for reimbursement of quarantined animals related to the rabies protection program. And 1482 is with Triton Services for the Administration Building Elevators Modernization Project in an amount not to exceed $35,070,000 through March 31st of 2025. The next three resolutions extend agreements. The first is 1483 with Senegro Central LLC for biosolids dewatering operations for the Environmental Services Department through March 31st, 2024, with an option to extend. Resolution 1484 is with Franklin Iron and Metal Incorporated for scrap metal removal services for various county departments through December 31st of 2024. And Resolution 1485 is with Rumke of Ohio Incorporated for old corrugated containers and mixed paper recycling services for the Environmental Services Department through November 30th, 2024. And the last two resolutions solicit bids. The first is 1486 for the Juvenile Justice Center Water Heater Replacement Project at an estimated cost of $600,000. And the last is 1487 for the Administration Building 10th Floor Renovation Project at an estimated cost of $1,343,200.
Move to approve, but I have a quick question. On 1482, the elevators modernization. Let's talk about that. Yeah, inquiring minds keep asking, "When is it gonna start?"
So we hope to begin demolition hopefully by the end of the year. If not, it'll be first part of next year, and the total project will be approximately 12 to 15 months.
What do you mean, total demolition? Judy, gotta walk up the steps. I'm not a good, yeah. Do I have to start walking up the steps? Is that what you're saying?
No, not unless you want to. So we will still have three elevators in service at any given time.
Okay, just in one at a time.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Unless it's you, then you will need to take a step.
Okay. It's only 11 floors, come on. You can do it. Okay, I remove, you move. Okay. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
And now I have a few more questions. I just didn't want to forget. So can you tell, on 1477, the Purchasing Solutions Alliance, how big is that alliance? I mean, can you tell me a little bit about the alliance?
Yeah, I don't know the alliance directly, how large they are, but I can say that this is a program. It allows us to meet our competitive bidding requirements, as well as take advantage of purchasing economies of scale.
Yeah.
And so this is just one of many that we.
Okay, okay. Good. And then 1480. So it's a big, big project, old building at the rival.
Correct.
The state is paying part of this, correct?
Yeah, the state's paying approximately 65% of the.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
So when I see almost $6 million, we're only paying a part of that.
Correct. That's right.
Good. And thank you to the state. I don't thank them enough. Because they don't give us enough. That's what I was just gonna say. Okay, sorry. Environmental Services, Matt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For Environmental Services, we have Resolution 1488, approve the plans agreement and cost participation with the city of Kettering for proposed waterline utility work in connection with the East Loop Bike Way project in the amount not to exceed $26,716.11. Resolution 1489, amend the connection fee and ancillary fee schedules through December 31st, 2024. Resolution 1490, re-adopt and/or replace, amend, renumber all existing roles for the operation of the Montgomery County Soloways District and authorize their incorporation into a new comprehensive set of roles for the operation and/or management of the district. Resolution 1492, solicit requests for qualifications for professional construction administration services for the Soloways Shoot Linings Project. And the last two are to authorize amendments. The first is Resolution 1492 with American Structure Point Inc. for preparation of detailed construction plans and specifications for the Stillwater Lift Station Replacement Project by adding $116,400 to the amended amount for a revised total of $968,710, and extending the date through December 31st, 2025. And the last one's 1493 with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated for the sanitary sewer hydraulic modeling and flow monitoring project by extending the term through June 30th, 2024.
I move for approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Matt, I just have one question.
Yes.
So, the lift station.
Yes.
Under 1492, that will not be done until December 31st of 2025?
Well, it should be done before that, completely finished. So we have, we've had to go back to redesign to add the grinders. It's the reason for part of this amendment. So we should be bidding it out probably three to five months.
Okay. And the reason we had to do this was because of the tornado, correct?
Yes. Well, the original lift station was built in the 50s.
Yes. Right.
And then the tornado, we had a bunch of trees that just kind of landed right on it, so we piecemealed it together. It was already on the list to be replaced.
Tornadoes, but my point was, the tornado is still affecting us. When it's at 25, it's like, "Oh, my gosh."
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Jerry, Human Services.
Yes, we have one resolution before you today under the Department of Job and Family Services, Resolution 1494, and it's to authorize a facility rental agreement with the Washington Township Recreation Department for the Job and Family Services Adoption Recruitment Agency.
That's very nice.
We're very excited about that.
Yes.
And the date of the event is actually November the 18th.
That's great. Okay. That's great that we're doing it down here this way, because we don't always do those down here.
We like more.
Yes. Okay. Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business Services, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under Business Services, Information Technology, Resolution 1495, authorizes purchase from M&amp;J Technologies Direct for Workspace One subscription license renewals in an amount not to exceed $112,040 through October 29th, 2024. Under Community and Economic Development, 1496, authorizes an economic development government equity edge agreement with the city of Dayton for the Bond Bright Distributors Project in amount not to exceed $350,000 or 3.5% of the total project cost, whichever is less. 1497, authorize a delegation activities agreement with the city of Trotwood for the grocery store support project in amount not to exceed $100,000 through June 30th, 2024. 1498, authorizes an intergovernmental agreement with the village of Farmersville for the Farmersville Redevelopment Project in amount not to exceed $25,000 through March 31st, 2024. And finally, 1499, accept the recommendations of the Community Development Advisory Committee for proposed community development block grant, CDBG project funding for fiscal year 2023.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I was very happy to see the grocery store, 1497. Yeah, the three of us were there bright and early this morning in Trotwood for the ribbon cutting of the new Gordon Food. And it's not like what we envisioned. Emily and I were talking about this earlier. It's a grocery store. It's a true grocery store, not like the GFS Gordon Foods that we've been to for many, many years. It's beautiful, too. I mean, yeah, it was really nice. So we were happy to be there this morning to cut the ribbon, and we're happy that we were able to use CDBG dollars to support that. So Chris and your team, thank you. Okay, under County Commissioners, portionally, we have 23, 1,500, and that is to appoint Kevin Beaman to serve on the Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board for a four-year term through November 4th of 2027.
Move to approve. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do not have anyone sign up to speak, do we? Unless anybody out there, any of you students feel like coming up and saying anything else? You sure? Okay, all right. County Administrator.
Thank you. FuYao Glass America has been a good company for a reason. They continue to expand, bring more jobs to the area. They're looking to fill production associate positions, workforce team, helping them recruiting efforts by holding a hiring event just for FuYao. I believe they're adding 350 additional jobs. It will be Thursday from 10:00 to 3:00 at the Job Center. Go through the red door. You can find out more at thejobcenter.org.
Well, last week, just like this week, was so busy. And we, I mean, I'm thankful. It's Thanksgiving coming up, and I'm very thankful that we have so many wonderful organizations in our community. But last Thursday, the three of us, and we're joined by some of our staff, and we went to the VA Medical Center, and we brought cupcakes, not for the veterans necessarily, but for all the employees. And many of them, we were told, they are veterans, many of the nurses and doctors and support staff, but we were able to take them cupcakes, and it was so much fun. It really was. We went on many of the different floors. You know, the doctors and nurses and staff there take such good care of our veterans, and so we felt that we needed to go say thank you and to show our support, especially since Veterans Day was on Saturday. But we're just thankful that we have a great veterans facility. You know, it's, and I learned this last week at another veterans event, that we were the third, well, there were three, okay, that were first-built VA centers. And when President Lincoln signed the bill creating our VA. Well, last week, just like this week, was so busy. And we, it's, I mean, I'm thankful, it's Thanksgiving coming up, I'm very thankful that we have so many wonderful organizations in our community. But last Thursday, the three of us, that were joined by some of our staff, and we went to the VA Medical Center and we brought cupcakes, not for the veterans necessarily, but for all the employees. And many of them, we were told, they are veterans, many of the nurses and doctors and support staff. But we were able to take them cupcakes and it was so much fun, it really was. We went on many of the different floors. You know, the doctors, nurses and staff there take such good care of our veterans. And so we felt that we needed to go say thank you and to show our support, especially since Veterans Day was on Saturday. But we're just thankful that we have a great veterans facility. You know, it's, and I learned this last week at another veterans event, that we were the third, well, there were three, okay, that were first built, VA centers. And when President Lincoln signed the bill creating our VA, that was the very last thing he signed before he was assassinated. I never knew that. So there's now going to be a whole new statue of Lincoln dedicated to that, to the VA. But our history there at that VA is incredible, so I encourage everyone to head out that way and check it out. You might want to wait till after the new Lincoln's installed, but it's done. The statue was done by the same guy that did, the same artist that did the one that's on Courthouse Square. But in this one, he's seated and he's holding the legislation like this, so it's pretty neat. Do you have anything that?
Well, no, I was going to say about the two new people that are on the Veterans Hall of Fame.
Oh, yes, yes.
They're not in your remarks, okay.
Well, well, actually they are, but I'll let you take them. You go right ahead.
You go right ahead. There were two individuals from our area that were inducted into the Ohio Department of Veteran Services Hall of Fame, Terry Johnson and Lester Lyles, both Air Force veterans. Congratulations to both of them.
Yes, General Lyles, he, he's done so much for our community, state, country. General Lyles was here at Wright-Patt for many years and head of all, I think of the whole, he was like the top general. But he has been such a supporter, he's supported the Big Hoop Law. He supports so many different things. He now, for many, many years, he was on the DPNL Board. He's also now on the Jobs Ohio Board, so we're very fortunate that General Lyles, although he doesn't live here full-time, he considers us his home. So we were really happy to see that he got that as well.
Absolutely, okay. Well, unfortunately, hunger and homelessness, it's, this is the Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And our Administration Building, our lights there are going to be orange this week. Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week provides an opportunity to create awareness about the struggle of hunger and homelessness in local communities and across the country. In 2022, almost 3,900 households experienced homelessness just in Montgomery County. And that includes about 350 children. And also as far as food insecurity, almost 12% of our population in Montgomery County are experiencing food insecurity. So you can find out more information on homeless solutions on our website and view our Food Equity Coalition Plan on McOhioFoodEquityCoalition.org.
And you have to do the summit. I was just going to say, what do you have coming up this week?
Oh, a little thing, we've got going at Sinclair Food Summit, 13th Annual Food Summit from 8 to 12. So we've got, we're 300 people signed up, so we're going to have a good, a good morning.
And you always honor the champions in this space.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, thank you Commissioner, because Judy has been the champion for food insecurity and for the solutions for 13 years or more. So thanks for doing that every year to bring recognition to the need that sadly isn't getting any better.
Yeah, well, and I think we saw that this morning with, in Trotwood, that brand new grocery store, it's going to be absolutely wonderful and it's so needed in that area.
In that food desert, yeah.
Well, on Thursday, I get the honor of attending the annual Adoption Day with, at our probate court. And this year, we have 14 children who are being adopted. And I have attended this every year and it is just such a special moment because everyone is so happy that these families are going to become forever families, that those children have landed. And it is just heartwarming, to say the least. And the little ones, often the judge lets them get up and, you know, do the, what do you call it?
The gavel.
Yes. So it is very precious. And so I want to take this opportunity to not only thank those families and everyone involved, but also the caseworkers who, you know, work with each child to find the best solutions and to find a family. Those children have been through a lot. And so when it has such a happy ending, it's truly a celebration. So we will be giving each child and their family a personalized proclamation to really celebrate this special day, so.
That's great.
It, you just can't put it into words, the things that, you know, family is something so many of us take for granted and that's not something to be taken granted at all. So lots of good things happening this week.
Well, we've been to those.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, it's very, very sweet, very heartwarming.
True. And you know, you often see some of the parents that are adopting, this is their first or, not, I mean, not their first, their second or their third. And you also really love it when people adopt siblings together.
Yeah.
Were there, I was going to be there, were there any siblings?
Oh, it's coming up. I haven't, it was last week. It's coming up Thursday.
Well, then maybe I will be there with you.
There you go.
I haven't looked at my calendar that far. Okay, we will not have a commission meeting next week, you guys, so don't, you know.
I know that you were just dying to come.
Don't worry about your Tuesday.
Heaven's sake.
Take a break that afternoon. The next, it's unbelievable, the next week's Thanksgiving.
I know, I know.
Yeah, that's great. And then our next meeting will be Tuesday, November the 28th, back at the County Administration Building at 1:30. So happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanks for coming.
And once again, thank you for having us here.
Yes.
And our hats off to the students. Everyone have a wonderful, wonderful Thanksgiving. We're grateful for each and every one of you. Let's all be safe and have a great time.
Move to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.